It's 5:30 and we've got on our agenda to start with the Civil Service Commission applicants, which would require us to go into executive session. Counsel, is that your pleasure or do you have a... or committee, I should say, or is there another?
Mayor, I'm moved we moved this to the last second.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call for that vote then. Is there any other discussion? Let me first, we've got a couple of applicants here, I know, at least two. Okay, we've got two applicants here. I have more. Okay, we've got three applicants, yeah, three of the applicants here, I think. Would that cause y'all any heartburn if the council? That way, a lot of these folks could go on home. And it would affect more, it would get more people home earlier if we do that. If that's, if y'all are good with that. Counsel, any other questions or comments before we vote? Okay, the motion is to swap the order of the committee agenda and move the civil service applicants to the last item. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, thank you, and thank you guys too for... All right, Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll open Finance Committee, and we have four items on the agenda item. The first item is a resolution authoring the city attorney to settle condemnation lawsuit, and Ernest Kate, City Attorney, will present that to us.
Thank you. Counsel, this is one of the condemnations we filed on the Don Tyson Parkway Extension Project. The city's estimate of compensation was $47,800. As you can see on page 22 and 23 of the packet, the property owner provided an appraisal for $100,000, and the property owner has provided a counteroffer to settle for the total sum of $79,800. I talked to the mayor, we thought this was reasonable to bring forward for your consideration. And if, I don't know if this helps you make a decision one or the other, will we settle the one adjacent to this for no additional compensation? But not saying that that affects this one, but might make this one easier to swallow.
Move this resolution be forwarded to council for recommendation for approval.
Say aye.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to forward this resolution to council with recommendation for approval. All those in favor, please. Yes, yes, Jeff, go ahead.
Ernest, why is there such a difference here? $100,000 and $32,000? That's a lot now.
No, ours was 47,800, and the property owner's appraisal was 100,000. It's, this is almost splitting it in the middle, but probably about 5,000 more between.
That's right. I understand that, but why is their appraisal so much different from ours?
I'd be happy to, if you don't mind, I'd be happy to address that. This is a case of what we see a lot when we are very different in a lot of cases. It comes down, a lot of times like in this case, to the issue of severance damages. On the land value itself, we weren't that far off, $4 a square foot versus $5 a square foot. But the Highway Department did a study years ago, and all appraisers will tell you that this is a, it's an issue, and anytime you're taking part of a property, you have to look at not only the part you took, the square footage of, that's actually gone now, which was about a third of this property, is now, is no longer going to be owned by my clients. But now you also have a major...
Taken, it's not real clear in our packet.
It's a little over a third of an acre, so the entire, I'm sorry, a third of the property, the entire property was almost seven tenths of an acre, so it's going to go down to less than half, about four tenths of an acre. So this house, it's a house, yes, it's residential property, and so it was out there, and you know, this was kind of a remote area, and now there's going to be a brand-new four-lane arterial road, limited access, right in their backyard. So they, the Highway Department did a study, and appraisers know that, everybody kind of knows this, if you have a street running right through the backyard, your house may be worth less than somebody who doesn't have that. And the Highway Department did a study on, what they call that proximity damages, and it proved that the closer the street to the house, and the more traffic on that street, the more it affects the property value.
Well, Stephen, is it your suggestion that you use mark risk?
Mark risk did do the...
Is your suggestion that mark risk took that into account, and that ours, our...
Yes.
Maybe didn't?
They didn't take it, your appraisal didn't show any severance damages, and I think that, in fairness to your appraisers, I mean, you know, they're doing a lot of these, and I don't know, sometimes they do if it's a real obvious one, where the street almost touches the front door of a house. But other than that, we, if the Highway Department does an appraisal, or most of the cities, we don't usually see that a lot of times, or not much. And it's a judgment call, but our appraiser felt like if you put a four-lane road in your backyard, it's going to have an impact on the value of the house. And so in this case, that's what the difference was.
So we're not taking the house?
Not taking the house. So if you walk out of this house now, though, you have a very long backyard, big backyard, and when you go out, when this road is done, you're going to walk into the house, and you're going to have a pretty close view, close-up view, and impact from Don Tyson, which is intended to be one of the busiest streets in town. I mean, that's the reason we're doing the project.
It's about a third of the property that's being taken.
Yes.
What statement you made earlier, Ernest, about adjacent property?
There's a property immediately to the west of this property that we also, we've already got the order of possession on these, so it's just an issue of compensation at this point. But the property to the west, we were able to settle that one with no, they didn't ask for any additional compensation. I was just making you aware of that. It's not something we can use in our favor or against us, or if we pay extra on this, it's not something they can use against us in court either, so.
So the compensation is approximately half of what they offered?
Close. Their counteroffer is 21,000 less than their appraisal amount.
Yes. And I'll tell you, we're, you know, we've got a lot of projects going on, you may be seeing me again, I know Mr. Overton doesn't like to hear that, but when you, you know, when, one of the ways I, my job is to base, you know, in large part, the offers that we make off of the jury verdicts that we've seen, and this would be considerably less proportionally than most of the jury verdicts.
Okay, do we have any other questions?
Ernest, on these things, before we come to council, is there any way that, and we may not be able to, is there any way that we could see, actually see photographs of the properties and the proximity of the, maybe roads going through or something like that, to kind of give us determination of what the actual terrain's going to look like?
Sure, if you'd like for me to add that in the packet, if I can afford it, I'd be happy to.
I'm not sure it's necessary on every one, but this one would probably have been helpful, Ernest, on this one, because it is such a difference in the appraisals.
Well, in fairness to Ernest, we probably need to always do it or never do it. So, yeah.
And that's, these appraisals are different, almost every appraisal most people have ever seen was just for a bank, you know, for a collateral on a loan. These appraisals are completely different because they have to, they have to pretend that the project's done. So they, in the appraisal itself, they do include the construction plan showing exactly where it's going to lie, and they do measurements, and they do all that stuff. And I'll be happy to think about that in the future, too, to make sure everybody knows. But they are completely different, and they're a lot more expensive. So in this case, one difference between, I'm sure the case you settled, is these landowners spent a lot of money getting their own appraisal. They're a lot more expensive than a bank loan appraisal as well.
Okay, if there are no further questions or comments, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, we will move on to the second item, which is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to approve the change of order for additional services. And Ben Peters, Engineering Director, will let us know more about that.
Good evening. So a couple months ago, I think back in January, we talked about Luther George Park and the playground problem that we had, and that we didn't have enough money within the budget to complete that playground with the donated funds. At that time, we kind of all agreed that we would go forward with a revised playground design that was a little bit less than what was originally shown. And so this first resolution is to reimburse the designer, SMM, for their work in creating that bid package. So it's $24,000 to create that bid package. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Sorry, Ben?
No, go right ahead.
I don't understand what you mean by reimburse for creating, did they do it thinking that we would pay them later, or how does that work?
They did it to keep the project on task, and it wasn't until they were nearly done that they tallied up the amount of work that they did to create that, and that's where this 24,000 comes from. So they did this at risk, and if we said we're not going to pay it, they'll go down the road.
Obviously, I have an obligation to taxpayers. What is my obligation here?
I don't think you have a great obligation to pay this because they did the work without authorization and a contract to do the work. However, this does come out of the donated money, not out of any of the city's funds. So this comes out of the 12 million that was raised to build the park.
How about our obligation to those people?
Well, I think our obligation is to build the park the best way we can, and that this is kind of part of it. It is work that was done, it is work that was needed to be done to get where we are right now.
Reason they didn't do it in the beginning was because we valued, we VE'd it out, not knowing how much money was going to be raised, really.
That's right.
Basically.
This was part of the project that was taken out early to get in the budget.
When we, when we realized that this was eligible for, that our, that the city's portion to construct the playground would be eligible with regular ARPA, which we are on a deadline to have to spend by the end of this, or obligate by the end of this year, then, then we saw an avenue, and that's why we brought it back and asked you for permission to go put a bid package together and get bids to go ahead and construct the playground, knowing that it's a really important part of the park.
That's the next item.
And that, yeah, that is your next item, the actual contract for the, construction contract, contract for the playground. But that's why, that's why it wasn't done in the first, and they did the work, I would hate to, you know, they were, they did it trying to help, but I, yeah, I guess, I guess push comes to shove, we wouldn't have to approve it, but you're, we're not, we're not paying for something we didn't get.
Right. And I'm looking for an argument on why we should pay it, and so...
We got the services.
I do a lot of stuff at my office where I don't get paid. I guess, is it a situation where is this a common thing? I mean, is it kind of understood that we would pay them if they did it? Was there a, is that kind of common in the engineering field or...
Yeah, I mean, it was outside the original scope of the contract, and so if we went through the process, the normal process that it would take to hire them for this 24,000 before they ever started, we would never make the deadline to get the park open. So they did this in good faith, hoping to help us so that the park could open on the date it's supposed to open. No one in my office told them that they were assured payment, because I can't do that. But I did tell them that I would bring this at the same time I brought the construction contract, because it would make sense at that time to say, we're actually doing it, we're going to do the contract to build the playground, and this is what it costs to prepare that bid package. So they, you know, when we originally scoped this, well, I wasn't even here when we scoped it, but there was no scope for a separate playground bid package. So that's what we got for the money.
But we gave the nod to go forward with getting...
You did, that's correct. And I told them to go forward with putting this package together. It's...
You came to this committee before we turned it up.
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, we gave them the nod, so I, I mean...
No, we, this came out of the January when we all met, and we all said, we want to go forward and bid a different playground package. This is the result of that, this is how we did that.
Move a resolution, be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to forward this resolution to council with recommendation for approval. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item 3A is a resolution authorizing the execution of the construction contract for the new playground at Luther George Park.
Okay, so this is, and let me first say, it's my fault, I had too many tabs open on my computer, and I sent one resolution twice, and I didn't send this resolution at all. So Anna did a great job, I'm the one that didn't get the document to her. But we also can't afford to wait a month because of my clerical error. So you have a resolution?
They'd get it out that afternoon.
Yeah, it came out that afternoon, it got added, but it didn't get added to the agenda till now. So you should have this in a hard copy at your desk right now, and you did get it via email right after you got your packet. This is a resolution to higher milestone construction to build the playground that we bid. The total price is $1,397,900. We currently have $359,000 left in the donated funds that were earmarked towards the playground, so that would come off of that, resulting in $1,039,800, $1,039,800 to come out of ARPA funds, which is what we talked about back in January.
Currently, we have about $4 million, just a couple dollars short of $4 million in the regular ARPA fund. We've already pushed everything into lost revenue that we can up to date, so we're going to have to find qualifying projects, and those are not easy to come by. In fact, if you'll remember, Fire Station 4, we thought, would just be green-lighted, but whenever we go to our consultant, it, they have to fit certain criteria, and a lot of things are rejected. And the risk you run into is if you go ahead and do a project, it could be clawed back later. So we've been very careful about what we use regular ARPA funds on. And so currently, we have just under $4 million. We have, as the council's already approved, to move forward on the library project. We're following federal procurement guidelines. That's going to be approximately $1,000,500. Out of the $4 million, once we get a contract, we'll bring that to you, so if you subtract that down, you'll have about $2.5 million left. We do have until the end of the year, usually it takes months to get a project vetted, so that's why we think this would be a perfect project for it. We've already looked into it, and it does fit the ARPA guidelines. So we're going to have to come up with $2.5 million worth of projects, or we will have to return it to the federal government, so that's why we think this is a good project.
With this out, it leaves a million and a half, correct?
Yeah, this would take it down another million dollars, so, so, yeah.
And I have the plans on my computer, if you all want to look at the plans, but I can give you kind of a brief overview of what's included in this playground. It's about 1.2 acres of property. It's going to have some stone seating walls, concrete walking paths. It includes a four-bay swing set, two of them with kind of a big Papasan net chairs that you can swing in, and two more traditional swing sets. Multi-hoop basketball goal, which is kind of a art structure and something to play on. So it's, it's a whole bunch of basketball goals welded together at various heights. So you throw the ball up, and you can hit one of five goals. If you're a kid, I think it's fun to do. A large space net, this is just a big kind of pyramid made out of netting, so you can crawl up and down it. That's probably the largest of the structures that's going into this. A wobble bridge, just a rope bridge, not very long, probably from me to the mayor right now. Some play cubes, they're just kind of like what you used to see in the old McDonald's, they're plastic cubes like the kids used to put shapes in, kind of an octagonal ball, if you will. And then there's some boulder stumps and logs, and this is a big part of this. It covers a good area, probably as much as, I'm going to say, a quarter of an acre is varied elevation. So there's stumps, they call them stumps, they're really just logs set in the ground, and they're all four to six to 12 inches difference in height, and so you can step on each of those and walk around. And they place those in kind of a semi-arc, and it gives the kids a place to pretend that they're on a pirate ship, or on a hill, or whatever, but it's just kind of an uneven area where kids like to play on. Those are all made out, this question came up in January, what's this made out of and how long will it last? Those are all spec'd to be black locust, and that's similar to Osage orange, it's used as fence posts in most of the northeast, that's where this particular tree grows. Be similar to what we call Osage orange or bodark trees. It's very, very hard stuff, it's supposed to last 30 years without any treatment, so that's the service life of it. And then it's got some talking tubes, that's just, you know, got a tube buried in the ground, one kid can talk to another one from far apart. And then a bee hotel, which I had to look that up, that's actually a little, it's a little structure, but it's, it's got little reeds in it, little different cylinder shapes, and it's to attract single-type bees and wasps. So it's not a, not a beehive, but it's solitary. So carpenter bees and those types of bees that are good pollinators but don't sting you, those are the ones that will be attracted to this. And it's got a whole educational component about pollinators and why they're important, and so that's part of it. And then two mirrored balls, think of the bean in Chicago, just big stainless steel polished balls, so you can walk closer to it and get fatter, or walk farther away and get skinnier, however you want to do that. And then emperor chimes, which are just three, three stainless steel posts in the ground, all tuned to a C-major scale, so you can go out there and play, play a tune on it if you tap it in the right place at the right speed. And then a deluxe cajon, which is a box drum, sits about that high off the ground, and you just beat on it like, it sounds like a bass drum. So between that and the pipes, you can make a little music out there if you want. So that's, that's the fun part of it. The rest of it, plantings, seat walls, so the parents have a place to hang out while they're watching the kids play, and a lot of landscaping.
So that fun part, is it all kind of in the same general vicinity?
It is, it's all connected. It's really just one rectangle, if you are familiar with it, there's a rotary playground out there right now, that sits in the northwest corner of the site, and then everything hinges off of that and goes east and south. Kiwanis, I'm sorry, Kiwanis, blue and yellow.
So back to the price, Ben?
Yep.
As I recall, when we first approved this, we were talking about $1 million, which is what we're talking about now, I guess, right, out of ARPA? Were we expecting to spend that 300 and, how much is it, 397? 359, out of private funds?
Honestly, this, this bid price came in probably about $200,000 more than I thought it would.
I was going to say, we were hoping we could be out at 800.
Yeah, we were hoping we'd be in the 800 mark, but...
So it cost us something out there?
Market. I think stuff costs more now. To be honest, we only got one bid, and our one bid is our contractor who's building the rest of the project. So for me to say that we had it out there and got a whole bunch of good bids, and this is absolutely the cheapest we could get it done, I can't say that.
Were we expecting to spend that 359 on something else?
No, that was always earmarked for the playground. This allows us to VE back in some other things, like we've got to get the existing parks building taken down, we've got to put in some more irrigation, we can bring our trees from five-inch caliper that we had VE'd down to back up to eight-inch caliper. There's some sidewalk along Park Street that we had taken out originally that we want to put back in. So the way this lays out, we get everything back in that we wanted to have, that we can still change from this point. Everything that, you know, if it's passed, we can't change that. So some of the VE items are just water under the bridge right now.
So if we were to go back to the original playground design, what more would that cost than what we're looking at approving tonight?
That original playground design, at the last time it was priced, which was in December of last year, came in at 2.25 million.
Versus the 1.3 now?
Uh huh. Now, that's not a hard bid, that was an estimate, so we'd have to go negotiate that and see what the prices have done since then.
We do have the ability to add more later on, too, right? If this is not sufficient?
We can, although this fills the space that's available. So it's not like we're going to have lawn area that we're just not doing playground. All we did is, is this shrinks down some of the play features and uses cheaper alternatives. Some of what we cut out, or one of the things that was cut out is wood playground equipment that is custom-built to be, the one we were doing looked like a honeypot and a bee hanging over it, but those, it was all custom wood structures that would be hand-built overseas, I don't remember what country it was going to be built in, and then shipped here. Very cool, but also very expensive. Which is kind of why I think this bee hotel's in here, is kind of an homage to the original idea of bee-centric in the playground.
So would it be opportunistic for us to wait until we know what other items we want to earmark for that money, and if there is nothing, instead of losing it, use two, two and a half million and do the original design?
We'd have to get a rebid, it could be 3 million by now.
Since this is already pre-qualified, my question is, if there's an, if it's possible that we would lose that other 1.5, would it be better for us to even consider that?
Well, I think there's two problems with that. The first one is, we won't be done in time, so we won't hit the end date of the park when it's supposed to open. It's a minor thing, you can just move that, but we're all, we've been looking forward to the park for a while. And then secondarily, we would be having a different bid package, that'd be back in front of you in about 90 days, because that's about how long it takes to go through that process, and this ship that we have today would have sailed. So at that point, it'd be yes or no on the other package. This is what we think as a staff, and I think the mayor agrees, is the direct, the correct way to go. If there's money available, we can always add to this playground? I mean, if we start building it, and we look at it and say this is inadequate, there's opportunities to add stuff to it.
So I think, Kobe, what she's asking is, what is the chances that we're going to lose that 2.5, is that what you said?
Yeah.
One and a half.
So one of the things I'm working on right now, if you'll remember, we put a lot of work on the front end of ARPA, which actually, the United States Treasury made a change in their ruling based on what we did here in Springdale. And one of the things we're trying to work on now is the expansion of the potential of taking 2024's overtime payroll for police and fire or first responders. So that's something that's under consideration, we don't know for sure if that's going to happen, but we, there might be a possibility that we could roll over another, probably million, million and a half at the most, into lost revenue, which could then roll back over into our general fund. We're working on that, but, I mean, we don't know 100% guaranteed if that's going to work.
If we know certain, if that might fall through, then, then we have identified a different project that we know would be eligible.
We'll talk about that coming up in the next item, actually. Don't worry, I have a way to get rid of the money. We're not going to let it go bad, and we're not going to let anyone take it back, I promise.
I make a motion to forward this to, to council with recommendation of approval.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to forward this resolution to council with recommendation for approval. All those in favor, please state aye, and opposed, same sign.
I think the next, just to kind of wet your whistle a little bit, or remind you about this park and how, what a showcase it's going to be for Springdale. We've got Milestone coming in, I think the next, the council meeting after this one upcoming. I was in a small meeting with Mike Davis with Milestone, and he, he had been to the Netherlands to the shipbuilding yard where this stage is being fabricated, and part of it is being shipped over now, that's out of three-quarter inch steel plates, and it's going to be amazing. And there, there will be people that come to see that, not only from around Arkansas, but I think from around the world. And won't be anything else like it, and I wanted, Mike, I was so impressed, I wanted And I wanted Mike, I was so impressed, I wanted Mike to come and show y'all some of the process about how that's being done. Even though I, I went early on, I was part of a group that went and select, was part of the selection of the, the architect, the, looked at several different things. When I saw what Mike had seen, I, I was blown away. And I wanted y'all to, I, I decided, I asked Mike if he would come and show y'all that. Because it's a, I, I think, I think we're underappreciating what this is going to be. I really do. And that, the fact that three-quarter, over three-quarters of this has been raised privately is quite a bargain for the residents of Springdale. So I, I've asked Mike to come, and he'll just do a short presentation. I think it's, I think it's going to be the second council meeting in, in April. And, but I, I hope you'll be as impressed. Just, if you've ever built anything, you're going to be impressed. Because it's quite a deal.
And I don't want to steal Milestone's thunder, but if you go down Park Street right now, the first eight pieces are here and installed. So you can start to see this thing rising up out of the, out of the ground. So, and it's, it's an impressive shape.
And just in case you get pushback because we're getting something from Holland, there's nobody else could build it. We have, there was, they found one place, and, and you can ask Mike about this, they found one place in the United States that could build this structure. Of course, it would be completely different, the what, the process and the way it was made. It wouldn't be nearly as impressive as what this is going to be. And it was about twice the cost. So just because you get something overseas doesn't mean you're spending way too much for it.
But knowing that so many people are going to come to see that, that kind of makes me, again, want to put as much into the playground area as we can.
This is a good-looking playground. We, when you walk into it, I, I feel confident in telling you, you're not going to walk into it and go, compared to that, this is, they cheaped out. It, it's a quality playground. It's not as good as it could have been on the very front end, but it's still a very good playground. I, I, I would not be embarrassed by it whatsoever.
Okay, so we can move on then to a resolution. This is the design contract for Murphy Park downstream drainage upgrade. And Ben Peters again is going to explain that to us.
So I, I have to start this by, I guess, giving an update on recent history. So if you all remember, 912 Wilkinson was a building that was built over top of a box covert that was failing. We purchased the drainage easement from Mr. Bari. We took the building down, and we've opened that channel up, and the box covert was completely failed. In doing that, the, the situation is currently good, in that there's an open channel there, the water can flow through as good as it's ever been able to flow through that part. So we've, we've handled the immediate problem. Now, we look upstream from that point, and the current system as it sits in the ground is good for about a two-year storm. It cannot carry a 10-year storm. So this is to design from Wilkinson Avenue upstream, under Maple Avenue to Murphy Park Pond. And to get it up to our standard, which is to carry the 50-year storm. Now, there are some constrictions downstream, so we'll build what can convey the 50-year storm, but the system itself won't be able to convey that until we continue a project and, and take out a couple more blockages. But those blockages are significant. Most notably, it's a box covert that's under Highway 71 right now. And then further east, it's under a building owned by the Springdale School District. Currently, it's in great shape. It conveys the water, it's structurally sound. It just doesn't convey the 50-year storm. So we need to do this design, and we need to build improvements to the drainage system from Wilkinson to Murphy, and we'll make things a whole lot better. But there's still be work to do until we bring it all the way to Spring Creek right here at Johnson Avenue. Because everything from that point here is 60 years old plus. And it goes under the Apollo Theater, for example. So those are future things. But I told you the worst case, the best case is, all we need to focus on right now is Wilkinson to Murphy Park drainage. The design contract is for 191,900. And the estimate to, to do the project whenever we get to that point is right, currently at about 2.1 million. So all we're looking at tonight is the design contract for 191,900, the higher half to complete that design.
And just for clarification from me, so when we're talking about getting the water from downtown area to Murphy Pond?
It goes the other way. It starts in Murphy Park Pond and comes to us. It ends up hitting Spring Creek at Johnson Avenue. But in that system currently, yeah, it's right behind you. I mean, right, right there, out that window. Currently, we don't have any flooding situations where we have buildings flooding. The, the part that we're talking about doing here is where the flooding's happening. Myon Science has flooded a couple or three times. And when it doesn't flood, it bypasses, goes around the Starbucks into 71. And so we've actually had fish in 71 that we had to go pick up, because it comes over the pond, out of the pond and into the street. It's pretty slick. So this would, this would take care of that part of it.
So is this purchase of these properties, that's part of the two and a half million?
If, if we needed to purchase right, or easement, yes. Now, right now, that's a complete estimate. We got to do the design, and then when the time comes, we'll have construction dollars at that time and acquisition dollars.
Make a motion to forward this resolution with counsel with recommendation of approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to forward this resolution to council with recommendation for approval. All those in favor, please state aye. Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Ben, can I ask one question before you leave? That picture, and I don't know if you have it, but the picture on page red 47, it's kind of a aerial view of, it's got the something in green.
Oh, yep.
Is that the current, or is that the proposed, or do you know?
That's the current path. And we'll, we'll stick to that as much as we can, because we have easements in place for a lot of that. But yeah, you can see where it went under the building there, south of Wilkinson, that building. Yeah. Well, we're going to take the path of least resistance and the least cost.
Yeah, because that's the section that's gone.
Yeah, where the building is.
Except for that front corner of the east section.
Right.
Over is gone? That part of it's gone? That's what we got from Bari?
Correct.
Then it turns and goes east and goes under that, what used to be a doctor's clinic and now belongs to the school system?
That's correct. And then it becomes an open channel from that point until you get to Shiloh Avenue?
It's kind of north of where the helicopter lands?
Yep. Right next to the food pantry. Anybody wants to put their waders on, I'll walk it with you. Anything else? Okay.
Thanks, Ben.
The final item is a discussion. This is amending the 2024 budget of the city for microbiability pilot program with Skinny Labs Incorporated. This will be discussed. No? Oh, sorry. Just amending the 2024 budget, and this is presented by Colby before.
I definitely don't have anything to say about Skinny Labs. But on item number five, we want to have a discussion with you about amending the budget. This is nothing we want to do right now. But in previous years, the council's been good about succession planning. And as you know, Taylor Samples had just won his election, and will be switching out his position January 1st. He'll become the district judge. This is, this is something that we want to create a temporary position, so that someone can come in and work alongside Taylor from September through December 31st. We think four months is enough time for someone to be trained in that position thoroughly. There, there, there may be other positions like this in the city. We did this with Wyman's Position where I came onboard. It makes the transition much smoother, especially when you have people who've worked here for so many years. Those are difficult shoes to fill. And so we just want to make sure that we don't miss a beat. So in August, we'd like for you to consider amending the 24 budget to allow for us to pay for another deputy city attorney. And Ernest can go more into detail about that. For my calculations, it's going to be approximately $30,000 to do that. And, and between now and then, we may bring other positions to you as well to discuss doing that. But that's what we'd like for you to discuss tonight. And if it's something you want Ernest to move forward with, he's got reasoning of why he, he kind of needs to know at this point if we should do that.
Are you suggesting the existing judge can't teach him how to do extended lunch
I'll leave that up to the judge. How to respond to that?
The only thing I'll say is, is what Colby described is correct, that, that we would have a new attorney starting. The plan would be in September. But as Jeff could tell you, if, if someone's in private practice, it's going to take them several months to get it wound down. So we'd like to go ahead and advertise for the position, but not actually fund it until September. That way, because it's hard to, as Jeff could probably relate to, it'd be hard to hire somebody, have them start in two weeks.
I think that's a great idea. I've proposed this and pretty much through the military and through my employment now with, when you have a left seat, right seat concept, it absolutely brings that person in a nice, smooth transition. So I'm 100% for this.
Absolutely. In fact, I just got a revenue expense report the other, about last week. And we're a million dollars ahead of where we thought we would be at this point this year. So there's plenty of salary savings available to do this as well. But we will probably go ahead and amend the, but we would have to amend the budget because we're creating a new position.
Okay, so with that, finance committee is closed.
Who want, anybody want to take this? Committee of the whole?
I can. I'm going to open up committee of the whole. We have a resolution authorizing the execution of a mobility pilot program with Skinny Labs, Inc., DVA Spin, presented by Patsy Christie, planning director.
This is the second step in what we talked about the last time. We amended the ordinance to allow this kind of a operation to come into the, to the city. We've been working with Spin. They have a good reputation in Northwest Arkansas. They've done a good job. We brought some scooters in to the active transportation committee for them to try out. I think they tried it out, decided it was a good idea, and they're recommending that we move forward with the Spin. We had some available for y'all to try downstairs before the meeting today, but I guess nobody could get around in time to try those out. What this is, is a 12-month pilot program. They will bring in 50 scooters, 50 e-bikes, and we have a chance to try out and see how it's going to work in Springdale. If it doesn't work, we can terminate the agreement in 30 minutes, I, 30, 30 days?
30 days.
Sorry, not 30 minutes. That's a little quick. 30 minutes would be a little quick. And they come in and take care of everything. There's really no cost to the city. The, the agreement is, you'll see, takes all the liability away from the city. They come in and try it. If we see some that's in the wrong place, we'll call them, they'll come pick them up. They take care of them, they keep them operating, they keep them charged. We, Jill and I had a meeting with-
And they, they know where they're at.
Yeah, they know where they are.
If, if, they can, they can find them and come pick them up within a few hours, it said, yeah.
Well, Jill and I had a meeting with the new administrator at the hospital the other day, and he was really excited about the idea of having some at the hospital, because they have nurses and doctors who would like to come downtown to eat lunch, but they're not going to give up their parking space. If you get a good parking space when you go to work, you don't want to move your vehicle till it's time to go home. But this would give them some opportunities to come downtown. I think another good place would be to put them at the Jones Center here at City Hall. You know, places around where people are coming in to the area, the museum, maybe even the medium. We haven't quite tied down all those places. But we would start with 50 scooters and 50 e-bikes. Now, the e-bikes have a little bit longer distance with those, you could ride them down the greenway. But when you get outside the city limits, they're done. Now, we have representatives from Spin. If you guys have any questions, they're the orange ones you see in Fayetteville. Okay?
So is this the same as the boundary lines in downtown, or we're just opening it up to all of Springdale?
No, we, we're setting it up with a, what's the term? Geo fence. I always lose, that's not my vocabulary every day, of the areas that they can go into. And we can try it. If it works well, and we can expand it, we will. If we don't need to, we won't. Those kind of things. I mean, I think it gives us an opportunity to see if we have a clientele in Springdale that wants to use this kind of equipment at no cost to the city.
If I read the maps right, Patsy, the e-bikes would be, they'd be accessible anywhere in the city limits. The scooters would be-
Downtown.
Limited to downtown. But after, if there are no issues after, what, how many days? Is it after 30 days or after?
It says-
It didn't really expand the area, except that it, it put a leg all the way down Powell Street.
Yeah, so that you could go all the way-
So that you could go on the freeway there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And we can come back in a minute as we see if this is going to work. It gives us a chance to try it. I know there's a lot of concern about seeing those things dropped off everywhere. But we don't have the same demographics in Springdale that you see in Fayetteville that's going to use it. I think this gives us an opportunity to test it. And it's a mobility pilot program agreement. We changed the name, so we know exactly what it is.
So Patsy, what are your thoughts on it being exclusive?
To downtown? Oh, well, we, we have to work with a company that has some experience in the region. We talked to another company who was a startup company that wanted to do it, but they couldn't show us how they could handle it. They didn't have the equipment. I mean, this is not something that just everybody can do. And we wanted to go with someone who's experienced in the region that knows how to do it, and that's why we went with Spin.
You made it a-
Do you think the pilot program's just exclusive? Or if it works out and everybody likes it, then would, I mean, they have more than one-
For the first year is exclusive. Or if we decide to amend the agreement and change it to something else, for the first year is exclusive. We want to get a good track record in town before we open it up to people who don't have as good a track record as this company we're, we're working with.
Was there a reason, you, I'm, I'm trying not to infer what you did not imply, but is there a reason you wanted the council to know that Spin was the orange ones in Fayetteville?
Well, I've heard comments about, you see the green ones everywhere. I've seen a few of the orange one, not as many. I, just in what I've observed and what I've heard from people.
But Active Transportation looked at different companies? And this is their recommendation?
Staff did more than than Active Transportation. Yeah. But this one company that's really anxious to get started, they may be somewhere in, in a couple of years, but they don't have any, they don't have any inventory, they haven't tested their, their software out very well, they don't know how they're going to maintenance. And one guy had a full-time job, and the other one did too, and they were going to do this in nights and weekends. That's not what we want. We want somebody who's going to do it right to start with.
And I think the, I think the language of the ordinance that we passed, kind of like taxicabs, they would have to come-
Right.
-get permission from the council before they could start operating-
You can't just show up and start putting them in town. Right.
Are the, guys are, who, who were here from Spin? Anybody?
They were downstairs.
They were downstairs?
They were downstairs.
I was wondering if the council might have any questions for them?
They were downstairs. We were hoping y'all would have opportunity to come and look at them and try them. I don't have enough balance to be able to do it, I can tell you that. That's not for me.
Some of us have done them in DC and other areas. They're, they're nice. I mean, they're, it's, it's, I hadn't thought about the hospital. That was a good point. I didn't think about it.
Yeah. We're one of the first ones that approached us about it, was, is there some way we can get some access from the, from the hospital to downtown? Or even, can I ride an e-bike out on the trail at lunchtime? And I don't have to bring mine up here.
So since the last time that we talked about this, was there another meeting with the active transportation committee about this?
Yes. The active transportation committee met. The Spin people were there with scooters and the bikes, so they could try them out to see what, and talk to them directly.
So, you know, as we do, we talk to the community. I think there's an interest in e-bikes.
Okay, yeah.
Haven't had much interest in the scooters. And tried to broaden the demographics from downtown to out where, where I live and outside of town, and talking with people who are, and they ride the trail all the time, they have e-bikes. And others who like to walk it. And just haven't had the good vibes on scooters. So in that, is there an option to look at, let's go with e-bikes for a little while and just see how that goes? Or is it a combined package?
Well, we didn't, we didn't pose that option to them. If you want us to discuss that where we try just, you want 50 e-bikes and?
In my opinion, Brian, it would make more sense to start and take away than it would be to not start, right, and then and keep adding, and that's my opinion.
Give you a better sense of what people want to use.
And and we'll get monthly usage. We'll get quarterly report reports that we present back to you, but we'll get monthly usage. I think Tristan's going to track it very well and see what, how it, how it works and the locations that we find them and that kind of stuff.
I think this is going to be detrimental to downtown in the future with the parking issues that we currently have, and we've got to have some sort of solution to get people to move to the middle of our downtown area from the outlying areas in downtown. I think this is a must.
Well, I had the same input that Brian had, that bikes, people were okay with the bikes and especially on the bike trail, so they don't have to go buy an expensive e-bike to get e-bike, you know? But I did get a lot of pushback on the scooters.
And is that because of what they see in other locations?
I'd assume so. How many scooters do they have in Fayetteville?
Uh, over 1,000.
Well, if it, if they don't, if they're not downtown, honestly, they're probably not going to be real interested in the scooters.
It's really designed to help mobility in downtown, so maybe you could park at the Jones Center and be able to come downtown and eat and back and forth. For some people, it's too far to walk.
The biggest was di- the complaints are dinosaur, that they're laying, that they're, you know, they look like-
And I asked the guys about that. I saw them today when they arrived with their scooters and they, they said they, you know, you know, they want the business, but they said they'd take care of that. They said they'll come, make sure they're in the right place, take care of them if they're in the wrong place and-
And if they have to fish one out of the creek, they have to fish one out of the creek. Somebody asked me about that. How are you going to keep them out of the creek? Well, we're probably not, but that's their responsibility.
They talked a lot about their app.
Yeah.
And how that, and those of us who've used one, you kind of know generally how those work, but I haven't, I haven't seen their app.
Yeah, I think they've had good success with their app. I don't know how much different it is than the, whatever the green bikes are, but they had one that seemed to be pretty, when I can figure it out, it must work okay.
Do you, do you know the difference between the price of the e-bike and the scooter?
No, I don't because we didn't get into the discussion-
Is it cheaper to do the scooter or do you know?
Oh, I'm sure it is. We didn't get into the cost of what it was to to rent them. That's something that they would, I assume they would handle with the, with their operation.
You may have people that can't ride a bike but could ride a scooter too.
Yeah.
I'm going to follow Brian and Randall a little bit. I talked to a lot of people after we had some discussion and I didn't get anybody in favor of scooters, just like you guys. I'm still going to stick to the fact that I'm not a big bike guy. I don't think we're there yet. I don't know why we build a lot of trails and then we're going to push bikes back to the highway. I know not everybody will agree with that, but in my business, I see bikes and I've seen them out there since we had the last discussion. You get bikes out on some of these streets and it's, it's crazy and I just, I think it's a little bit, I just personally don't think we're there to have this downtown, but in general, I just don't, I don't, I don't, even though it doesn't cost us anything, just because it's free doesn't mean it's good for us. But I know you don't know if we don't try, but I, I'm just not there.
I can tell you there's a-
Let me say one thing about the, just because of the comment you made about the trails and I, when I ride my bike, I got to ride on the streets to get to a trail and it won't, it'll never matter how many trails we got. I got to ride on neighborhood streets anyway. So I, I ain't, anytime, anytime somebody's riding a bike or walking, which I do more of, or a scooter, instead of driving a car down here and parking, I think that's a plus. But, but I-
We didn't have a great overwhelming desire for the trails when we started those either. We didn't think we needed those either and I, quite honestly, in my opinion, downtown wouldn't be where it is today if the greenway hadn't gone through.
But I also think you have to consider the parking situation as it is now and what it's going to be in a short time from now in downtown. The biggest lot that's behind the building that I work in is only going to be open to the, the businesses that are owned by that lot. And I was told that this last week. That's going to take away all of the parking for those businesses and all they'll have is those few spots out front. Odd Soul, Mr. Taco Loco, Shelby Lens, all of those businesses right there, people have got to be able to access them and you're looking at them having to park even further and further away. And if you don't provide some sort of assistance in, in getting them to that location, it's just going to hurt us in the long run.
So have we-
Well, and you know, we are working on a parking study and we'll have that in a couple of months, but-
So have we talked to the, the businesses downtown about these and get any feedback from them?
Not directly, no, but the, the discussion's been out there. I hadn't had anybody reach out to me and say, we don't want them.
I can only tell you about talking at, about it at Shelby Lens and they were all, the employees specifically were excited, knowing that their parking was going to be pushed way far from where we currently are. That's definitely an option, especially if they live nearby. They're going to be using those to get to work downtown.
Any reason those guys didn't stick around for tonight?
I'm sorry?
Those guys, any reason why they didn't stick around for the meeting?
Well, we, we thought you guys would have a chance to talk to them downtown and we didn't, didn't ask them to say because they had to take their equipment back. You want them back in for another meeting? You want to put this off till the next committee meeting? We can do that and have them here and give you a presentation if you want to do that.
I'd, I'd like to have the conversation with them about doing e-bikes only.
Okay. So you want to come back to the next committee meeting with this? Okay, we can do that.
You may ask them about a six-month pilot too because, I mean, if they put them in right now, it's going to be winter for-
Well, that's why we're trying to get this done now so we could get it in the warm months and try it in the warm months and see how it was going to work.
And really, you've got a 30-day pri- I mean, you're going to have a one-year agreement, but you've really got a 30-day-
Yeah.
Yeah, 30, 30 minutes up to Patsy.
Tell me 30 minutes to give them that 30-day notice. Let's put it that way, okay?
I mean, I understand them wanting a one-year because they're having to capitalize a lot to stand this up. And and to Mike's point, I think he's, he may be right. We may not be, the need may not be there, but this is kind of their, this is kind of their risk. I mean, we won't, we won't know until we try and it may, it may not be there, but it may be.
We're trying to start addressing the parking problem and the mobility issues in the city as a whole. We thought this was a good way to start with bringing some alternatives into a controlled area so we set, see how it's going to work.
Patsy, if we pass this resolution, do you know when they would begin providing the?
Well, we were going to shoot within 30 days. They may could be available in 15 days. I don't know. They've got the stock. I mean, we're only talking about 50. That's not very many.
50?
50 scooters and 50 e-bikes. And if they've got 1,000 or more that they've got in rotation in Fayetteville, I, you know, that's, that's just a little bit amount. I think we can get it within 15 to 30 days if we move it forward to try it.
If we do this, do we know where the charging stations are actually going to be at?
We had those identified. Well, we're, we're talking with like the hospital and here at City Hall and the museum and some public places that we could have them where we know we could kind of watch them and control them and things that we thought, and the Jones Center. So we had-
Who sets those up?
They do. They come and set up everything.
So they work with private?
But basically it is, they put a box on the, where you park them and that's all there is to it. You don't charge them in those locations. We're not putting in charging stations. We're not doing any of that stuff. We're just designating places where they can be parked where you know you can go pick one up.
Like a-
Yeah. We're not putting charging stations in anywhere.
So all these restaurants and places that Amelia mentioned downtown, they won't be parked all along in front of them, on front of the sidewalks and everything?
Well, we have to designate to them the areas that they can park in.
So again, controlling people's abilities and doing that.
Yeah, they're, they're, they can't block the sidewalks or the right of way.
And the average person won't do that that's paying attention.
No, there'll, but there'll be yahoos that do and they'll have to be dealt with. King Yahhu, as you know, was in the Bible and he drove a chariot really fast.
My father-in-law used to say, you can't design for that people thing and you can't, you can't, and he would never be a people no matter what, but you can't design for all of those, you know? Yep. Yep. Yep.
We have a, we have a motion on this. I'll make a motion table in the next committee.
I move that we go into executive committee to, I move that we go into executive committee and interview these candidates one at a time.
So?
More specifically, we're going to executive session to consider the appointment to Civil Service Commission.
That is correct. That is the proper terminology.
You have the choice whether I join you or not. It's up to y'all.
I don't care.
I don't, I'll take it. I don't care. Uh, well, I, okay. I may have to ask a question, but, but nobody will know except y'all and the people I ask, so. I can go in and out and bring them in. We can do that.
I can be the escort.